Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Bob, Joe, you guys ready?
I am, I am here.
Mr. Mayor?
He looks like he's AWOL.
Bueller.
Bueller.
Bueller. All right. Oh, I just, no. All right.
I'm back.
Okay, all right. So I need a motion to come back into open session from our recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Okay, next up, we are at discussion of planning board member removal notice. Councilman Line.
I raised this before because it is concerning, it is concerning and detrimental to the common goal of the, not only all the other boards, but to the council as well. When someone is provided information, not that it's confidential information, but is, when it is taken and removed and manipulated and turned into propaganda against council, board, whatever the case may be, and that is distributed amongst the entire community. Regardless of who that board member may be, when you take information and you use it against, and you share it and present it as, first off, you present it as coming from the village itself, it is sent as misinformation. It is sent as propaganda. The common term that's been thrown about for the past four or five years has been fake news. We do not, as a council, have the ability to do a redirect. We can't re, we can't respond to something. If something is sent out, we can't turn around and go, okay, we're going to respond to it. I can't, Andy, you can't, Ken, nobody on this council can. So it takes, we have to wait till the very next meeting, and guess what happens? That spark turns into a wildfire of misinformation, propaganda, where you've turned the entire village town upside down because of one person's taking information from their board and removing it and using it as said propaganda or misinformation. We just dealt with the fact that we had a council member who was gone absent for several, several, many months, paid, and until this new council was never held responsible, never held accountable. At some point, we have to be a board, a council of integrity, and if we're not going to be that, then we're, we're no good. Might as well take, we were talking about speed limit signs. Take them up, we don't need them. Let them raise something down here all they want, because there's no accountability. So we can't sit here and go, I want a speed line, a speed limit sign put up, and I want to control what the traffic does for the safety and for the well-being of our community. We can't sit here and go, you know what, Andy, you're new here, but you don't have to come back anymore, and you don't have to say a single word about it, and you just continue to do it. We've put the steps in now to take, take that away. We have to also recognize that when someone takes information and they use it against, if they were sending out facts, if this information was put out and we were trying to hide it or suppress it, because again, I'm, I fought for the First Amendment. I'm all for the First Amendment. But what I'm not for, and what I won't stand for, is someone to use misinformation and information that we have, and they knew good and well, that that information wasn't approved, it wasn't discussed, wasn't anything, but it was a way to go, you know what, I'm going to throw a wrench in, I'm going to throw a wrench. And here's what I don't believe, maybe they did, maybe they did not, but every person, whether it's staff, whether it's council, whether it's planning board, PRG, whatever it is, they had to answer for that misinformation. They get the phone calls, and listen, that's what we're here for. We're here to answer those questions, but we're not here to, to answer questions off misinformation that's come from our, one of our board members. If we can't have integrity in the people that we, that, that are on these boards, then it's, it's no good. I believe that this individual purposely, absolutely purposely did it. I went to the extra step of also contacting John Jones, who was on the planning board, and asked him his, his input and his take of this, and, you know, he, he agreed as well. And, and again, I don't take this, I don't take this lightly, because I don't, I would never want to remove anyone. I mean, we, it's, it's good that we have people to step in, but if the people that are going to step in aren't going to go against, that's okay if you have your difference of opinion. Opinions are free, but passing out and distributing misinformation and propaganda off the back of our hard work on the PRG, on the planning board, and on this council, absolutely and totally unacceptable. I hold myself to that standard, and I would hold everyone to these boards to that standard as well. To the, to the point too, that every person that comes in, each person that comes in, not every, it's a wrong play, they sign a code of ethics, and in their packet is a code of ethics. And there, when I go to this court code of ethics, and I, you know, I got it here, I can look at this, and I, I mean, it just flies all over me. Under section two, integrity and independence, exhibiting trustworthiness. That one in and of itself, how can I trust giving information to someone that they're going to take and use it against? Well, that's just one. I, I'll gladly go through this list if y'all would like me to, on the ones that I've highlighted.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you.
I agree.
A hundred percent. I have no quarrel with any of it.
It's, I mean, when you read this, and you say guidelines for ethical behavior, taking, taking documents, go right ahead, absolutely. But putting, putting the entire village in an uproar and upside down off of information that you have been trusted with to not manipulate, not provide it as propaganda or misinformation, if there's no accountability, then, hey, I've always said, in three and a half years, I'm accountable, because if I, if I choose to run again, guess what? Every person out here gets to say, you know what, I'm holding you accountable, I don't like the way you served. But I would, I would be, I would be remorse or to say that people would look at me and go, where was your accountability? Well, you know what, we had someone that was out for a year. You know what, we had someone that used it as misinformation, and we held them accountable. We look at you, we hold, we take the financials, we hold them seriously, that's a serious conversation. Everything we do has a serious impact to it and a conversation. But this is just to me, when I looked at, and I don't have to go any further than the, than looking at the code of ethics, and this flies all over the face of me, and I think this individual has to be held accountable, should be held accountable. Nothing personal at all. But that's, that's my piece on this, so.
Okay. Anybody? Bob, Mr. Mayor?
I, I believe that to Jamie's point, one of the frustrating things in the last seven years for me, individuals know how to sort of game the system. We've honored over the years, you know, that we need to kind of be cohesive as a group, and before I would put anything out, that's why in the last letter I sent out, I got approval from all of council. But if you look across the country, you don't see mayors getting approval from individuals, and they're speaking their individual piece, but as a group and as a board, I think that we do wait, have to wait, or we'd have to call a special meeting to maybe address these things, and that's unfortunate, but they, they game that system. They know there's that timeframe, and we honor, we actually honor the fact that, you know, before we put something out, let's have a discussion about it rather than doing it. So I, I agree, but, and I don't know if we're going to get into names, or we're going to reach out to, or have someone, you know, reach out to this individual that you're concerned about and let them know ahead of time before we actually put it on the agenda to have. So I don't know what the plan was, because when I read this, I wasn't sure what we were going to be, or giving them an opportunity to, you know, either be there for something, or if there was going to be discussion on it, or, you know, that kind of thing. I wasn't sure where we were going with it.
My recommendation would be, or just my first thought of this, would be to go to that person, and, because again, I want to follow all the appropriate procedures on this. It's the reason I reached out to John Jones, the chairman, and I think we go to that person and give them the right to say their, say their piece. And, but then move to put it on the agenda, and then gather that information, or present the information that, what they come back with, whatever their response is, and then we, we vote on it up and down, to up and down whether to remove this person from planning board.
And do you want staff to call this person? Do you want us to call this person? Do you want to call a special meeting and ask this person if they want to come in? How do you want to do that? What are your thoughts? Because I'm not sure.
I, I think, including the chairman, I think he should be part of that process, of whether it would be, you know, staff calling, or, I, I don't know what the appropriate process is. I'm fine with either way, because at the end of the day, it's accountability.
Right.
So if...
Um, real quick, do we want to maybe discuss this in the closed session?
I don't think we can.
This is open session. You can't discuss this.
Honestly, Mayor, no, I, I would not recommend doing that, because again, I'm all about transparency, so I want someone to hold me accountable. So if it's discussed...
No, 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 I'm just saying, just aims at how we do it and take direction to you, because I think an individual like one council member going to John Jones, for instance, okay, that's, that's, we're not discussing that as a, as a group. It's you taking that person's name and going to John Jones and discussing that person's name. It's not, we're not talking about it in open public, but if we had a closed session for it, then we can discuss the name freely, because that information should not get out to the public, and then, you know, this way, the action is taken by the board, not just you as an individual.
Yeah, that's not, I don't think that qualifies for closed session, but...
All right, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I, I think that, I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I don't see anything wrong saying the person's name, and I don't, I mean, I think this can serve as notice, and if they want to come and talk to us...
Well, but you have, but you have several people on, on, and they all may be listening to it and going, oh my God, does that mean?
No, that's what I'm saying, we can say the person's name, and this can serve as their notice.
I just don't know the appropriate steps.
I don't know.
It sounds to me like you're wanting to potentially look at removal, or at least some type of disciplinary action, whatever, based on a violation of code of ethics.
Right.
So if you guys want to go down the list and tell me exactly what code they're, they're violating, we as a staff can inform that person that, you know, the council is, you know, seeking that you have violated these specific codes, do you want to rebut them, and then that can provide their opportunity to present their case.
Okay.
And then you would present that information to us on, at the next?
Meeting.
Meeting.
Well, I would need that from you guys, like what, what exactly the violations would be.
No, 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 like whatever the person gets.
Yes, I could do that, yes.
Okay. But, but, because I don't want to drag this out, I, I think there are too many people tiptoeing around this whole thing, and it shouldn't be. We, we know, you know, when an officer pulls up to a car, and he doesn't tiptoe and go, well, were you, what was your reason for going fast? I mean, was it, well, but, you know what, my, I think I left the iron on. Well, then it's okay to go fast. I don't, that's not, when we look at the code of ethics, it's, it's pretty clear. Like I said, I went through one. I went through, I went through, I went through one, exhibiting trustworthiness, done.
Do you want to go down the, the code of ethics and tell me specifically what it is?
But, but, but that's where I'm, I'm concerned, is we are not, and I understand your point, Christina, but we haven't said a name yet, and that's where, if we want to give them the opportunity to just step aside and not go through this process, then, then they have the right to do that. I know that hasn't been done in the past, they just surprise the individual by announcing his removal, which I didn't think was fair at all, because they didn't even give him a chance to do that, but I understand your point, Christina, but we're not discussing anybody's particular name, and if we're not doing that in public, you know, how do we, how do we announce it? I mean, if, if we individually come to you, Christina, which I don't believe we all have, and said, yes, we have an issue with this person, then, you know, you can present that to them, and then they can make a decision and say, well, just, and you give them a heads up, it's unanimous, or three to two, or four to one, that you're, there are concerns with, you know, whether it's discipline or removal, that you give them the opportunity to address that, and they may just say, I'm going to step aside and, and not go through this process. But either way, I thought that's what we were trying to get to, where we gave this particular person a heads up that this, this is, through discussions individually with each council member, and maybe we can do that after this meeting, and say, hey, is there a concern of someone, and then you, as an administrator, reach out to that individual and give them that information. Especially, because there may be multiple, we haven't discussed the name, there may be multiple names.
Yes, no, I totally understand, and I would have to obviously know the name of the individual, but also what specific violations are discussion here as well, so that they could rebut it if they wanted to. But if you, if you guys want me to call Chaplin and ask him what his recommendation is...
That's what I was getting ready to say, can we, can we go in closed session to discuss this with the attorney and get legal direction?
We, we can if he's here, since he's not physically here, I'll have to see if I can get him on the phone.
That's fine. I would, I would see if you can get him on the phone, not at this particular moment, because we need to move out to closed sessions, since we're already going into closed sessions for a number of different things. So then we can discuss it with him at that point, and then when we come out of closed session, we can direct you per his legal advice.
Okay, we'd have to amend the agenda when we got to that point, but let me get the answers. I'll, I'll see if he's, if I can get him.
Okay. All right, does that work for everybody?
It works.
In the event that it doesn't, what do y'all want us to do?
Then we need to get a time where we can go in a closed session with Chaplin to discuss it and get, we'll have to have a special meeting to do it.
I agree with you, Jamie, about, you know, we don't want to drag it out, but we do want to, I think we need to take the appropriate steps.
Absolutely. I put myself, I put myself in, in other people's shoes before I have. Give them the opportunity to rebut and to go and give their side of the story, and absolutely do that. So I, because again, this isn't fun to do, this isn't what we should have to do.
No.
But also, I'm going to turn that back around and go, I also shouldn't have to, you know, be out there and defending or answering questions about something that's falsely...
Erroneous information.
Erroneous information.
Right.
And if it, and if it doesn't get a stop to it now, guess what?
Don't keep happening.
We, this is just going to keep happening. I agree with you.
And just, just to be clear, if we're going to give that opportunity for them to rebut or do anything, we'll have to, if they want to do that in public, then that's where their name will be disclosed, and there'll be an opportunity in public for them to rebut whatever concerns we have with them.
Right, and I, and I think that's where we need to get Chaplin's, his, his direction. So I think if we can go in a closed session to get his legal direction on how to handle this, then I think that that would probably be the most advantageous.
A hundred percent.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait and see when Chaplin gets back to us, and see if we can get him on the phone during closed session?
Are you all right with that, Jamie?
No, I'm perfectly fine with it. I mean, again, I want to follow the right steps, this isn't something I think widely, and certainly don't want to, you know, you hate to remove people that want to, want to help, but still, there's accountabilities.
Agreed. No, agreed. Okay, so let's table this to just later on in the, at the closed session point, and hopefully we'll have heard back from Chaplin. Okay. All right. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Discussion and consideration of item for town hall meeting, and consider setting date for town hall at the August work session.
So staff had put together a couple of different things that we've heard throughout the discussions about what you are looking for at town hall. We have also since asked with the school about going ahead and reserving a date, and unfortunately, because of everything going on, they can't pinpoint a date with us yet. So we are going to go back to them at the end of July and try to see if we can get, you know, a date determined at that time. I know we're looking at the fall, so we have a little bit of time to work with. In the meantime, wanted to kind of get some ideas for what it is you guys are looking to see at this meeting, so we can get started on some of the, you know, if we're going to have visuals and, and that sort of thing, we can go and get started on ordering some of this stuff, and in, in the meantime, we will get that date scheduled in the fall.
So the school is open, they're just trying to figure out dates?
Technically, the school is closed.
No, I mean, open to us using the facility?
They haven't given me that either, so we have to submit an application to them, and they'll determine whether or not we're approved to have an event there. But right now, they're not giving us any information until they're back in session.
It's not just us, it's all them.
They've had, they've had forums at the school before, so I can't imagine that we wouldn't be able to. Now, maybe with COVID stuff, maybe they've changed their policy, but we've got to wait until they open up, but...
I'd like to ask if, are we waiting for Marvin Ridge High School? Or are we waiting on, can we, is another option to go directly to the, or the superintendent of the Board of Education in Union County, and go to them directly and say, we would like to use Marvin Ridge High School on this date?
I did that. I went there today. I went to the district office to, to request the use of Marvin Ridge High School. They in turn sent me a contact person, and I needed to contact the principal, but they also provided the application so that we could go ahead and get that process going. But they're not giving any, any approval to have anything in their auditorium right now.
Because of the COVID situation.
Because of COVID.
Okay. Have there other, are any other venues that we could approach for this, other than the high school? I mean, just as an option, that's just...
It's not going to always be a third forum.
I mean...
We can do the village right where we do it now, at the church.
Now, not going to be big enough.
We'd have to ask the church.
I'd like it to be bigger.
Yeah. Mayor, I would, I hope, I hope, I hope more than Mr.?
Mr. Tim.
Mr. Tim. I hope more than just Mr. Tim shows up.
I agree, I just, you know...
The, the barn is, is great, but it's, it's, it's weather dependent.
Yeah, it's going to be weather dependent.
I think we just start to, we just continue down the path of, like Christina said, let's put together the information that we're going to be, that we're going to need.
Keep reaching out.
All, all the stuff, and then we're going to get an answer in, in due time, and even if we give at least a month heads up, I think in, in August, let's just say August.
We'll know by August, like what's going on.
Because we're targeting somewhere in the, maybe the middle of September.
Yeah, but hopefully by the end of July, they're going to know, like, what's going on with school. The, the school board's going to determine something in the middle of July.
Yeah, they got to be ready for school starts, so they kind of...
If I, if I may interject, I was going to say, it's the council comments, that I did get a call from the Board of Elections recently, and they are in the hunt for a venue that can house for students of primary or vote, or pre-voting before the election. They're hunting now for the November election, and she called me to ask if I knew of anything, and I was, you know, obviously throughout the high school, stuff like that, and it got me thinking, and this is something that the band had used, and it's not far away, but it is a church down in Waxahaw, right on Newtown Road, right where, across the street from the, just north of the Harris Teeter, is a church with a huge area for, there's a stage, there's plenty of seating and stuff like that, and I don't, couldn't remember the church's name, but worst, push come to shove, if we can get the school, we may, because the band did it for their kind of awards ceremony, and it housed easily two, 200-plus people, easily, and that may be a location that I can pitch you the name of that, that particular church that has this venue. It's right on Providence Road, right off of Providence Road, just north of the Harris Teeter, that's down in Waxahaw. Not far to drive either, if you're a resident, especially if you're a resident on the south side of Marvin.
Okay, that's good. You get, get more, more options are better than less.
Yeah.
I love, I love this idea, Park, Trunk and Greenway being there, planning board being there, I like maybe the idea of maybe Gene Stowe giving a five, 10-minute historical stuff. I think that's a great idea. You know, the copies and highlights of the master plan, copies and highlights of the survey is great. I think we should have big things, a village hall, the VCD, all the new, I, I think all of this is great. I didn't come up with anything extra, but I think, but I like what you guys put down, and I think that's a really good start. I know that there are some, you know, I would like to have an early Q and A, like send in your questions, and so we can have some, okay, here are some questions that were sent in, but I would also like to have, you know, the opportunity for people to ask live questions, and that, you know, would be of all boards, so...
Yeah, I think that should probably be, the Q and A should probably be at the end, after they've been presented with a bunch of information, because that draws all the questions out.
Correct, correct.
It gets the people involved, and then we can, but we, but I do want to put a time limit on it, because we could be there for a week.
Yeah. We need to make sure that we've got some, some, you know, buzzers on people, so we can... Talking too much. Joe? Joe?
Oh, you're talking to me? I'm just making notes here, so...
Oh, so you made a note that there's a time limit on how long you can talk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know y'all had mentioned fall, are y'all thinking September, October, November?
September.
September.
Okay.
Like mid to late September, like let everybody get back into school, back in the swing of things.
Before the holidays get cranked up.
Before the holidays get going, and yeah.
So what we'll do then is we'll place this back on the work session for July, hopefully we'll have some answers by then on the location of the school, and, you know, if that falls through, then we can get some, something reserved between the July work session and the August regular meeting.
Okay.
And that'll give us at least a month notice to get...
And then I would reach out to Mr. Stowe, I would also reach out to PRG and planning board, let them know that we are planning on this, we would like their attendance, their participation in, in, in doing this.
And ask for venues from them, too.
Sure. Okay, very good. If, anybody got anything else? Nope, fair enough. Up next, discussion of voluntary annexation plan. Rohit.
Great.
So at the last council meeting, we had discussed, well, I'm just, I'm just going to introduce it. At the last council meeting, we had introduced the idea of an annexation plan, and Rohit had kind of encompassed this entire plan, and we kind of, you know, directed them to scale it back a little bit, and let's focus on smaller baby... and let's focus on smaller baby steps. And so what he's identified here is number one, a tentative letter. We probably should have proposed or drafted. This is kind of a tentative letter that we put together that basically says, this is why you should elect to be annexed into Marvin. These are the top kind of five things that we saw as what was great about us, that we should share with these individuals. He's also, um, he's also highlighted on the map, the areas that he's proposing along with what the annual taxes would be based on the valuation of all of the homes in that subdivision.
Okay, cool. I love it.
So then you could basically look at and see if there's anything extra that could be provided, you know, council desires to do so. Obviously, looking at the chimneys, you know, it's a whole nother police officer if we needed to have one, so.
Okay, um, just little, this is just little things, the Marvin City just needs to be. Oh no, I guess that's city limits, Marvin City. Okay, sorry, that's fine. I misread that and just saw that, nevermind. Um, so with this, I, I read next door because I do. And there is a post on bicycling and there are posts on there that people that do not live in Marvin, do not live in Waxahachie, they live in unincorporated Union County, seem to think that we as Marvin and Waxahachie have any say on public roads and bicycling. So they are yelling at us, saying that we can't basically get it together enough to figure out the roundabouts and figure out the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. These people don't live in Marvin. So what I would say to that is if you would like to have a say in that kind of thing, we would love that. Come on into Marvin. And that, um, is one thing that I love suggestions. I love listening to people, but it would be nice if people could understand who controls what. And we can absolutely go to DOT and ask for these things, but we don't have control over the streets. So just for, if, I'm sure that person is not listening, but if you are, just remember that we don't own the roads that you guys are talking about. One, one, actually two neighborhoods that I think we should definitely look at, it's PBS and Providence Downs. We have three streets that are in Marvin and Providence Downs. We should absolutely look at bringing the rest of Providence Downs in there. Cause that, I think, looks great.
May I say something?
No. I mean, yes.
You're, you're missing the biggest thing is not on this letter.
What is it?
Representation. Representation.
That's what I, basically what I just said.
No, no, no. I'm saying from a voting standpoint, then they better hope Marvin gets it right going forward to put the right people in place that, that aren't these intense developers that want to change the whole look and that's why they bought here, they're getting all this and they can run for office too.
Oh, so they're, yes.
Yes.
They can, they can.
Ability.
But there'll be a voting block.
Representative.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Because right now, they can't go to their legislature. Who are they gonna go as an HOA?
Yeah. That's a good point, Joe.
They can follow through the village.
He's thinking.
Follow through the village.
Good job. Joe, that's a good point. I like it.
Thank you, Joe. I, I was gonna say that too, that, that, that representation is so important. And I was also gonna say, and what you were talking about using this example, um, maybe there's a collective other little examples that we've done such a good job with the, um, the FAQs, you know, on the website, that we attaching to this is a FAQ. In other words, what some of the communities out there have been asking for, like whatever, you know, bike zones or biking zones or whatever. And say, this could be something that if you did this, this is something that could happen. In other words, maybe just kind of questions and answers from us that lead us back to why you should be a resident of Marvin. That's all.
Okay.
So real fast, this was just a preliminary step and us, you know, seeing if you guys like this. We do have a next plan.
Absolutely.
Well, that's well done, Christina. It's well done.
Good job, Rohit.
We do have another plan that would go along with this. We're still pretty far early in this conceptual idea of putting this out there because we want to get together a nice marketing package. We want to actually have a meeting with these HOAs and kind of do it at one time. We're not just gonna send the letters out to the HOA and just expect.
Instead of having a meeting with them.
We want to be a little bit more aggressive about it instead of passive. So that's, um, that's kind of the next step.
I like the start. That's what you wanted to make right now. I like the start.
What we'll do is we'll revise the letter based on the representation piece. We'll revise the annexation map to reflect PBS and Providence Downs.
PBS.
PBS. And we'll put it again on the work session for July and hopefully have things a little bit more solidified.
One thing I want to add about, um, Providence Downs and Providence Downs South is that in the beginning, Councilman Vandenberg asked for a phasing plan. And at first, at, at the last meeting, I had said, I, uh, don't know how I would be able to pick which neighborhoods to do first without asking which ones are most likely to join.
Yeah.
And then we had this conversation and staff did that. It was kind of overwhelming to try to figure it all at once. So I just picked five neighborhoods that I, that I, based on what I heard, people called me. They said, oh, we want to be in Marvin.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's good.
Rose Clifford said that.
Okay.
Chimneys, it makes sense. It's really like in, in our donut hole there.
Yes.
So I, I just kind of picked five neighborhoods.
Well, then phase two could be PBS.
It could be Providence Downs and Providence Downs South.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, um, the way I, the way I understood it, um, when you guys described to me last time was, we should start small so that we have success under our belt and then go for the big fish, which is Providence Downs South.
Well, one thing that, um, to note is Sedgefield, the front, the frontage there that is on Waxahachie is Marvin, but the rest of the subdivision is not. And that was when, that was, yeah, it's split.
On a smaller scale, right.
Well, but it's split. I mean, like this, like part of the subdivision is in Marvin and part of it isn't. So to gain the entire subdivision versus just the front. And that was really done for connectivity and zoning to get from this side to this side to connect. That was a, that was a key piece there, so.
So Sedgefield, I go on phase two. Perfect. Okay, good. All right, let's take a, sorry guys, we're gonna take a quick five minute recess for everybody to grab some food, kind of get a motion to go into recess.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.